How should be the O if in a divine family?
Andorakaga walgravurukumuthila pilligal appudiruparagun.
How the children will be in the family with they live for the Lord?
This is the sangeethanudiyae devanudin noka.
This is the purpose or intention of God in this song.
Devan oru varthi eludumbadudu adhi endhakaala thukuporundukudi ra eludugiraa.
When God writes the word, he is also writing to for all periods.
In the bible ngurathu endhakaala thunna adhu sailbadukudiyaa.
The bible also use work for all periods.
Idhu vandhu ethniyo nothanallukkumunna eludunnaadu, ipodukidhu othuvaradunna chollavee muddiyaa.
We cannot say it was eaten before many centuries, it is not useful for nowadays.
Indha andoracholugiraa on kaililin prayasatthi nee saappuduvai.
Here the Lord says you lead the labor of thine hand.
Onakkay baakiyamum nanmayum undairu.
Happy thou shall be and shall be well within.
Idhu namayellaaru virupapputu vittalala elidivakiru.
We are so desired on this and write and hang in our houses.
Idhu namudiyavallu le sailbadugirada.
Whether it is applicable in our life or not.
Vedha vasanangal jeevanuladu valnamiuladu chollapatturukara.
The word of God is quick and powerful, it is said about.
Vedha chollugirathu on kaililin prayasatthi nee saappuduvai.
The scripture says you lead the labor of thine hands.
Abidina idhu lindhe enna velanguvaka.
What do we understand from this?
On kaililin prayasatthi innurthanukku deeniseela, saappudurukku vaipu rukke.
There is chance that the labor of thine hand can be eaten by another man.
Neeti muligalenaam idhayu ujju parkkamudiyam.
We can see in proverbs regarding that.
Oru manidhan vesithanathile sikkumbadudu, avunudiyekaililin prayasam purathiyarudee vittile cherukaradu ennu bible cholud.
In the bible says when a man go for fornication and endangalindha, his wealth is going to the other man's house.
Neeti muligal 5000 marikaram paththavaasanaathile namida varthi parkkala.
We can see proverbs 510 in this.
Annyear unselvatthal driptiyadayvaragun.
The stranger will be satisfied with your wealth.
Un prayasatin balan purathiyarudee vittile poich cherum.
The labor of thine hand will be go to the stranger's house.
Oru manidhan thavaraana thodrabugal kollumbadudu, avunudiyasambathiyamala veenaga poguradu.
When a man having a wrong relationship, all his earning will be wasted.
Innur vudhatle parkkumbadudu.
When we see in another angle.
Remba sambathikiranga, but kadan kodukranga.
They are yawning more but giving all loan.
Kadan kodukrathala?
Not giving the loan.
Adhal rendu pokiri rukkara.
There are two portion in there.
Remba panna avungalukku varudhu, but riarkanava remba kadan vangananala vattikeythaa avangani sinjithurukanga. Panaththaa ayirakannakal koduthuktiyiruka.
They are getting more earning because they borrowed so much loan, they are giving the interest.
Apunni ivalu nalukkayin prayasatha, nee sambathichi ennupurujinam.
Then what are the use of all your labor of thine hand and earning?
Madhipu mariyadu ikaga vesham bhotu valandhu, nee parlavathavutra kodaa.
You should not leave the government for your reputation and respect sake and live.
Devanudiyavartha asiruvadhan choludhu, un kaililin prayasatthi nee un sandadi saappadam.
You have to eat and your seed should eat all the labor of thine hand, the word of God says.
Ethniyo viswashigal vattikey ketikiteerukkara.
So many believers are going on giving their money in interest.
Apa avunga sambathichile ennupurujinam?
Then what are the use of their learning?
Katthriyundekayin prayasatha asiruvichu ennupurujinam?
What are the use of God's blessing, the labor of thine hand?
Ayalanthanu tirkathrisin manavi vandhu kettadukum modalaavudhu kadanai thirtthu meendathu kundu ennusei jeevanambandhan chonnar.
So the wife of the prophet Azar, first of all whatever you earn, you give that.
Indha irukkara ellarko oru keldu kakkara, ongelde kaililin prayasaththi ningi saappurigala.
One question is asked to all, those are seated here, are you eating the labor of thine hand?
Illa ongu sondakaranjaavutu peranana?
Are whether your relatives eating and going?
Illa friends ondu jaavutu peranana?
Are whether your friends are eating and going?
Illa vattikey nee ethniyepmuavanga kadanakku vattikey koduthuktiyirukkaya.
Are going on giving the interest for the money you have borrowed?
Orisellalang cholukkanga vattikey mealanaiyeduva koduthutan, annalena modale ennuseede? Modaleyindhaandi vattiyindhaandi ellam koduthajupattan, andha first install amount apriyinunidire.
If somebody says the capital amount is standing as it is, I have given more money more than the amount.
Indhi bankilla kadanak kodukrathukku pootipodraga.
The banks are also with a competitive mood, they want to give the money.
Vandi ellam bankilla vandhu paper kappan, veedakappan, asalakapappu, onume vana sir, nigichonna pothu nam koduthuranga.
In the earlier days, the bank will be asking all the evidences now they know any evidence.
Unudiyabalanu urincha andhavalnamilapooradu.
Those powers want to observe all your labor of thine hand.
Innu orisellar remba kadan sambathikiranga.
Many others are also yawning much.
But kadanakku vattikey kodukranga.
And they are giving for interest.
Nan thirumuvan choluraya idhu thavare.
Again I say it is wrong.
Onakkukatthar panaththakoduthudu vattikey vittu kaas finance vittu edukurukku katthar kodukkavellaya.
God did not give the money, you have to give for the finance and for getting the interest.
Neenalla baru onakkuyedhovu future tehavikaagadu katthar onakkirinjiruparay. Tandhiruparay.
You see, well, God might have given it for some future needs.
Annalakaililin prayasatha neeyu on manavi, on pilligal saappadu.
Only the labor of thine hand should be eaten by you and your wife and children.
Oru pen vandhu yam pilligikisohumulla pisadupadichiruke vidhutale vendunni esutavanda.
One woman came, my daughter is devil possession, she need deliverance and she came to Jesus.
Esitchnar modalla ethu saappadattu? Arsaappadattu? Arsaappunna? Pilligal saappadattu?
First of all, Jesus, let the children eat first.
Pinnala adutha avanga saappadattu?
Next, there is other seed, he said.
Adhu bole, unudiyaprayasatham modalaavudhu nee anubhuvikannu.
First of all, you have to enjoy the labor of thine hand.
Idhu vaakutatha?
This is a promise.
Idhu oru asiruvada.
This is a blessing.
Adhu purathyarudee vittiku poogudaa.
You should not go to the stranger's house.
Devan onenambi, onainde nyanaathukku mealan onakkaha odhivi seedu, idhalan kodukrata.
God is also believing you and more than your knowledge, he is giving all things to you.
Onne marinnottham prayasaparana onukonume nisirathulla, kerekampeer.
Like you, another man is struggling, he is not getting anything.
Adhalal, nan marvudinna karitha ongelukcholugira.
Again, I want to say this matter to you.
On kaililin prayasatha first nee onkuduma anubhuvikannu.
First of all, the labor of thine hand should be used by your family and you.
Adhu purathyarudee vittiku, aduthama vittiku poogukkada.
You shouldn't go to the strangers or the others' house.
Thavaraana vudhatle panaththa veenasa salavadikaradu kdevan kanakka kapar.
God will lose the account if you use your money wrongly.
Aduthu onakkukatthar koduthutara, onakkirukkara kadan prachinellala nee solveppan.
Because God has given money, you have to solve all your loan problems.
Kadanathithittu meendathu kundu kattharukulli nee jeevanamani munneriva.
After giving all the loan, whatever the excess, you have to come in the loan.
Vedha menne cholugirada?
What the bible says?
Katthodi asiruvadam aisuriethey tarum adinoode avar vattiyo vedhanayoyo prachinyoyo koottar.
The riches of the God will give the blessing of the Lord will give the riches, he will not add any pain to that.
Adhe bole, panak adhimakarachitavada, vattikey panak kodukkaada.
So when you get more money, don't give the money for interest.
Adhu beriyasabam.
It is a great curse.
Sab, andhavattiyavangi nee saappatali beriyasabam.
If you get the interest and it is a great curse for you.
Bible choludhu, kattharukku bayandhunadakara manushan, avan kaililin prayasaththi saappuduvan.
The bible says a man fear the Lord and walk, he'll eat the labor of thine hand.
Unudiyakayin prayasaththu devaniduvarai appudikondu undurukkara.
How did God so far brought the labor of thine hand from there to you?
Unudiyakayin prayasangal asirudikapadu.
Whether all the labor of thine hand is a blessing or not?
Illa nee edukkara moeyarchila katthodi karankoodaeruka.
Whether all of the efforts you are taking, the hands of God is with you or not?
Neeseyavudhala vaikuda.
Whether all you are doing is prosper or not?
Idhukke sangeethal oru manushan vandra andorae, umudiyapiriyam engalmeel irukkattu.
Aman of Manhissang, he is asking Lord that your delight be upon us.
Tonnuram sangeetham kadaisi vasanathile parkkumbadudu.
Ninety from the Lord's verse.
Engal devanagi andorudiyapiriyam engalmeel irupada.
Let the delight of our Lord God be upon us.
Andorae engalde kaililin prayasaththi neer urdi paduthum.
Lord make establish our the work of our hands.
Andor, unudiyakaililin prayasaththapangirichtha, adhu yonume tadukumudiyaa.
If God is recognized, all the labor of thine hand, nobody can hinder that.
Adhukke pera, adhu asirudikupattukundae irukkum.
After it will be going on blessing.
Neen vandhan cholnamudiyaa alavula vanditte irukkum.
Unless you say no need, it will be going on coming.
Andorudiyapiriyam onmeel irundhal.
If the delight of the Lord is upon you.
Andor priyappadugira, kattharukku bayappadugira, oru valke onakkulla irundhal, kattharun kaililin kriyigalai urdi padutva.
If you fear the Lord and if your beauty of the Lord is upon you, God will send or establish the labor of thine hand.
Keralathi cherndha oru arabu desathuku poirunda.
A man belong to Kerala, went to Arab countries.
Angul la arabu shekta oru andhakerala naber velaki poichenda.
That person went for a work to the Arab the sheikh in Arab countries.
Andhaal oru arisi kada vachirunda.
He got a rice shop.
Ivur poicharambo, avarthai ivukku sponsor panni, arisi kadeela velaki kundu poichata.
He only sponsored for this man and took him for in the rice shop.
Andha sheikh, apur remba chinnavais.
The sheikh was also a very young man.
Ivur om remba chinnapaina, pudusa, apunna arabla poivela kishana.
This man also was a very young man, he went to the Arab country for their work.
Unmayanandhada oru sambava.
This is a real incident.
Avivam ponnalalandhu, varengi velaki ponnunu taatte avunkvarla kadaisi varika angiirundaka.
After he went there, he did not get the mind to go to anywhere else, but he was there in the same place.
Andhakadeela remba unmayam olaita.
He worked faithfully in that store.
Family la settle anuchche.
The family was settled well.
Kadakadakal viruthi adange, valarcha adange, palakilagal vendadu.
And the shops have so multiplied and it was increased and so many branches have been worked.
Yavlo branches thodangachi, ivam kooda rendu full administration manidira.
So many branches was developed and he was with that.
Andhenarathle.
In that time.
In the Toyota car, pudusa, avga introduce pandan.
They were introducing the Toyota car newly that time.
Andhakampanya apandha pudusa valla var.
That company came newly there.
Avanga andhara Arab countriesla, yarav dealer kadaipanaanidharibakumbadu.
They were expecting any dealer, they will get it from Arab countries.
Indha Kerala savaran chonnar, namavena namivalladavala parikola, namavena dealer edupon.
That Kerala man said, if we are developed much, we can take that dealership.
Andha sheikh chonnar, yenakal olun interestilla, neerundu parthukarana nisiga, edutuklan.
I don't have any interest, if you want to do a look after, you can take it.
Edutha, andhadesathle ivana remba famous aanav dealer amaritha.
After he take the dealership, he become the famous dealership in that country.
Nalla valarchi, nalla munnetu.
Very good growth and improvement.
Our pair Shani.
His name is Shani.
Nalla valarchi varumbadu.
When he got the very great growth.
Andha sheikh kodapilligala valarcha adinchata.
All the children of the sheikh are grown up.
Apa avunge chonnaga?
Then they said.
Indhaal avachitthi namayilkipoyilithu kudukro, nagaalala varandutallan, naga parthukro.
We will look after, we are also grown up, boy, we have to have this man.
Andha payangavai avga shekta cholura.
The boy said to his father.
Elakkadainananganaan overtra, adhada parthukro, indhadeelshippalana nagapathukro, yeen, indha paavu, indhavaisana alavachitthukandurukinga.
Why are you having?
Avar eda settlement pannirukana.
Why are you having this hole when we will look after all these shops everything?
Andha sheikh chonnara.
The sheikh said.
Neen chonnamadu, neen parthukarana nisila? Or clear pannila.
As you said, if you look after, I'll clear him.
Anna avunki settle pannunna, ittuna koodiyavunakani sinjalano? Settle pannu.
If you want to settle, you have to give this much growth of money.
Ittuna varshama entarundurukara.
He was being with me for so many years.
Neen perakaradukumunnaala, nae appudirundha, inniki nae evlo devala parikra, idhukke ellathukku oray karnayarada? Your worlda.
Before you born, how I was, now I am how is, there is all the reason, only this money is said.
Navakethra ayiram koodi irukkunna, adhal ittuvlo koodiyavunakani sinjano? Kodukona, apunna adhu nyayam.
This much growth of money should be given to them, that is just as he said.
Andhappilligala vandhakanakpooram.
All the children just sit together and made an account.
Sari ethnayiram koodi le ivluivlu kodukkono, right, okay koduthurukantana?
Then he said, okay, we will give it.
Avar adha vayi itte andhutha.
He got it and came back.
Unmayulam manushan, paribhurna asiruvadangalai peruvaa.
A faithful man will receive perfect blessings.
Unudiyakaililin prayasam onakkukadake.
You will get the labor of thine hands.
Adha asiruvada.
That is your blessing.
Neeti muli 31, 31 ennusoludhu?
What is proverb 31, 31 says?
Aval kaililin balanay, aval kani singal, kodunga.
You give the labor of thine hand to her.
Neevela vathavu onakkusambalam kodukamunna yamati tana?
If anybody cheated you after you look after the work.
Neekasta patta panathalala eduthuchitthu tharamantentana?
If either he has taken all the money you have suffered for.
Ah, nee evlo prayasapattadu la manjichitanga.
Whether you have suffered more, whether they all deceived it.
Adha asiruvada ma.
Is it all a blessing?
Oru kaas korivilama onkailani sinjavaa? Kodukunam.
Without one might, less than they have to give all the money to you.
Isakita vandha andhabinalekcholura, katthar nichyamay unnodurukkara rinbade, nan nisiveen? Ariveen.
That Abimelech said to I, that God is certainly with you, I know that.
Un kaasavinnurtha vakkaradu konu devan adiyaran kodukrathulla.
God is not giving any authority, your money should be taken by another man.
Avavunen kuuttu kailukuduthurno.
He has to call you and give your money to you.
Andor onakkaha kriyashiva.
God will work for you.
Bible appidathajuludhu, un kaililin prayasaththi nee saappuduvai.
The bible says so you will eat the labor of thine hand.
Oru kaas korivindri, adhal allune teedi varno.
All the money will come to you without any one piece less.
Appidi varlanan, adhu sabam, vandha ondya asiruvada onakkunna lakidinathu.
If it doesn't come, it is a curse or if it comes, when your blessing is going on.
Neeti muli 31, 31 ennusoludhu?
What is proverb 31, 31?
Aval kaililin balanay, aval kani singal, kodunga.
Give her the fruit of her hand.
Unudiyasinavathathadukkara, idhendhuvanvalnamiukku devan anumadi kodukkavee illa.
God has not given any power, that authority to hinder all your blessings.
Unudiyakavu cholura, katthar enudiyaprayasaththi parthar.
The Jacob says, God has seen all my labor.
Nam pona padeyakathar parthar.
God has seen all the ways I have gone through.
Nan padruvakastra thakathar parthar.
God has seen all the sufferings I have gone through.
Alakaga cholugirara.
Very beautifully he says.
Adiyagamo 31, 42 la varunga.
Genesis 31, 42.
En kain prayasaththi katthar parthu unne kadindukundar.
God has seen all the labor of my hand and rebuked you.
Ah, vasinga 42? Ebbri, ebbri anipirpa? Laban ebbri anipirpa? Thoraduthurpa?
Laban might chase him.
Onakkavela gadeyadu?
You don't have any work.
Onakkusambathiyam gadeyadu?
You don't have any earning.
Naon onkunume tharamada.
I will not give you anything.
Va namaviswashigal orisellalala ibbri manjichitukka.
Our people are also cheated by somebody like this.
Akani idhukopadariya.
Don't worry for that.
Katthar nisivaa, nisiyam, nyayinseevaa.
Certainly God will do the justice for you.
Panaththakodukama.
Without giving the money.
Porulakodukama.
Without giving the material.
Nelathakodukama.
Without giving the land.
Veedakodukama.
Without giving the houses.
Suttukala kodukama.
Without giving the property.
Ippidila yamaatrapattai, ethniyo viswashigal satyadukkaavuttu thudutha.
For the sake, many people, they have left it and came.
Idhukke bayandhi yakavu, elladu diidu ojaramsta.
We are getting afraid, I was Jacob took everything and quickly away.
Katthar ennodu illamal ponnali, enne verumiyathoradirba.
If God is not with me, you might send me empty.
Anna katthar enkayin prayasaththi parthu, onene nisinjithara, kadindukundara.
God has seen my labor of thine hand and rebuked you.
Namudiyakayin prayasangalai devan asirudikam.
God has blessed all our labor of thine hand.
Ivalan nalni patta prayasatin balanay katthar onakkutaranu.
God has given all the labor of thine hand, so far you have worked.
Andoray pathi ennusoliruke?
What is said about the Lord?
Avanavankriyikuthakadana balan, avaro du kodavargu.
His reward is with every man according to his will.
Neen oray oru kalason thanni.
If you give only one cup of water.
Kaasillada oru tumblar thanniyani koduthalo, adhukke ennundu? Neen unde pradivilanay adayamal?
You will receive your reward if you just give one cup of water.
Indhi kethanavair, ongelde kaililin prayasathanu ikkumidiyama thukkappadurigaa.
How many of you worrying without enjoying the labor of thine hand today?
Naevlo kasta patta?
I have suffered much.
Evlo unmayarunna?
I was very faithful.
Naanambi tana?
I believed them.
Ippidila ningacholurada, olakathala parkkala.
We can see the way you are saying in the world.
Anna vedha cholugirathu, unudiyakayin prayasaththi nee saappadu.
But the scripture says you will eat the labor of thine hand.
Adhukke katthar unne asirudikannu.
Because father, God has to bless you.
Un porulallam veli adikeppadavinti davasya.
All your material things should be fenced around.
Indhi keeniyen kadanla sikkiirukkara.
Why are you entangled in the loan today?
Yeen, elladu nee poimutti mutti, nee onne valkay vaikamale vandhiturukkara.
Why you are going and every place and dashing and your life is not prosperous?
Inniki na kootamudirukkula, onkudumuthila kara sabam, onkayin prayasathila kara sabam, illam poen.
Before the end of the meeting, before the meeting over, all the curses from your hand and the house should be.
Satan, satan boy andorathichonnai, yobuudiyay, kayin kriyagala ningasiruvichittingan, poyaavam poijunna.
The Satan went to the Lord and said, you have blessed all the labor of thine hand of Job.
Job 110.
Job 110.
Desathle periit.
His substances increase in the land.
Oru paye, avangamma vittu velasenchida, avanavala than.
A boy, he was grown up by the mother by looking at the.
Netthan andhkaay vandhe enta remba aladanga.
She came and cried to me.
Adhadu kalyanakatturukumunnaala, andammava, andhapyay, oppu remba please panniyachirpa.
Before he get married, that boy used to please his mother well.
Ippu motherlalando oru ponna kettiirukkara.
Now he got married, your girl from Madurai.
Ippanamammava sutthamanisirilaa, kanduka adh levelukkavoditanga.
Now he never mind the mother.
Paav.
He is very poor.
Anna, avanga netthi soluganga, ayah? Avavapavutitu odittara, indhappilligala naavala kradu k, nae ebriyada? Paathrangalivii rukke? Ohur vittliya paathrangalivii, indhappilligala naavala than?
There is, he said, his father has left and flee away, I have taken care of this children, to take care of the children, I have cleaned the vessel.
Ippidio konjam konjam vaipu kadachi, ivangalala ninjita? Andor days, javatra kettu, andor kodutha, asiruvathal devala paida.
By hearing the prayer, God has blessed them by chance.
Ippilligala allam farinlan, all levelukku poida.
Now all the children have gone to the very good level in foreign countries.
Anna, ippataya sutthama marikara.
Now they never mind the mother.
Adhadu amma okkutan sambathikara sambathiyani ninjarukkada rukkara? Teriyakudala.
The mother should not know what they are earning.
Terinja avange adhukkaadruvanga.
If she knows, you will ask something.
Eppalu kuturuman oru olakam.
What a cruel world is this?
Anna andoravana asiruvichtar.
But God has blessed him.
Anna innur vudhatle pathigan chonnana, oolidu kani shira? Yavlo cholugirak.
He is spending more for the ministry in another angle.
Priyamannurle, katthar namudiyakaililin prayasaththi veli adacha asiruvichtarana, oruun thadukunia?
If God was blessed and fenced all our blessing, no man can hinder you believer.
Avunde kaililin kriyagalini, nee asiruvichitthi, avan sambathu desathle nisinjide? Avangamma, nammasoluranga, ayayoyo, yenakutteriyamal, avangyupodurukam varunga, yekkarakannakal adavangyupodurukka, yenakterinja, nainavu, kettuvan ninjana, nainavu, tharla chollaveemaladakara.
That mother is saying, acres of land he has so got for without knowing me.
Onume illa me, sutthama, paappara, adhadu paathrangalivipalachakudumuthila, katthar koduthu, asiruvichu, engi kodunidha.
God has blessed in their family, very poor family, God has brought them in very high level.
Indhi kethanavair asirudikappadunna, asapaduri?
How many of you today want to be blessed?
Asirudikappadukkun chal, root chulithara, asiruvada yalandhuvanadukka karnamo, rendu muni choli mudikavaram.
I want to give you some root for how to get a blessing and how you can lose.
Asirudikappadukka remba simple.
It's very simple, you can be blessed.
Asiruvaththi yalambu yalakkaradu, adavada simple.
It's very simple, you can lose your blessings also.
Remba, rendu me remba, remba kadinamana concept kadayadu.
It's not a very difficult concept.
Remba chinnakam, conceptda.
Is this a very simple concept?
Asiruvada onkveetukvarno, abidin chonnana, nee cheyavinti remba simpleana.
The blessing has to come to you, you have to do something very simple.
Adhu onnavitu ponnunna, nee chumarunnaale poja, adhu poitirekka.
If it has to go from you, you keep simple, it will go.
Irannam samvel, aramadi aram, 11, 12 la parkkumbadudu, udanbadikke peti, obethi adam vittile kundu vakiappadathu?
Second samuel, 6, 11, 12, the ark of God kept abroad to Obeth Adam's house.
Avan vittiku vandhusheandhavarekka, avan tharutrambrichoral.
Before the ark of covenant came to his, he was a very proper man.
Avunkonume gadeyadu?
He did not have anything.
Taavi idha andhpeti, oru maatvanti la vachitthu, uttiyidu vandittha.
David was carrying that ark in the pulakot and brought.
Ivur peti binnala nandhavanditundhar.
He was walking behind that ark.
Indhadrummu, umma adichi, jalra adicha, avan maad, merandidichu.
The bullock tremble because hearing all the musical sounds.
Peti asanjavane, usha poikayuvichta.
When the ark of covenant was shaken, he used to touch that.
Avan chethittha.
He died.
Chetha avane sentimentai, avam merandu poivu, voturame, kitte nikkeradu.
Because of this anyway, nobody was standing near there, ark of covenant, because Usha died.
Pakkathle erundhade? Who was? Obeth Adam vittirundichu.
Only the Obeth Adam's house was nearby.
Bayandhuvai, beti angaragivichu, ellam, avam vittu poisandhira.
Because they got afraid, they got down the box in his house and went.
Avan adha remba bayabakti odhu, remba thaalmayodhu, ippidio oru baakiyam namukkadachirichan choli, andhpeti kunduvi, tam vittile vachu, oru parisutthama oru araya, clear pannu valla vachita.
He cleared a room and kept that holy box with fear and reverence.
Avada.
That's all.
Avam vittile vandichu, anneli rinna, avan kudumuthukku, yenna sinjalasasiruvada.
After the box came to his house, whatever he does, everything was blessing.
Etthana masarundichu?
How many months it was there?
Petti evan nalrundu che?
How long the Ark of Covenant was in his house?
Moonay, moonu masa.
Only three months it was there.
Moonu masatle, avan viidu, avanukkulaana, ellan, kaiyin prayasam, yenna nee chairana, ellame asiravada.
All his house and the labor of being on everything, whatever he did were prosper.
Obethi edam in viittayum, avanukkundana, ellavachin kata rasiruvichu.
God was blessed, Obeth Adam's house, all and everything belongs to him.
Moonu masatle, avan kodisorana marida.
Within three months, he became a very great millennial.
Avan, rajaavukkendu seedu kalupidju, ayah, namo oru kodusavilakkoonu poii vachuma, avan ipputtu, ipputtu, epidaita, periyalaitaan.
The news reached the king, we kept the Ark of Covenant, he became a very great man.
Evenu kadakata, ayayu, petti nameninjitha, misspentame, namukki puttu oru chance illan cholitu, ottenai, adritalayadu thukiru garparpantaa.
The very next day, he wanted to carry the box because we missed the chance.
Katthudiya petti, un viittil irundhal, un viidu, un kaiyin prayasam, ellas asirudikipadu.
The Ark of God is in, Covenant of God is in your house, all, all of the things, everything will be blessed.
Katthudiya pettiki chilappeyargalruthu.
There are some names for the Ark of the Covenant of God.
Allarun kaamana choldradu, asiripukudara, udonbadikke pettinsal.
All are saying only the tabanakil.
Andha, andha, udonbadikke petti.
That is the Ark of Covenant.
Idu onakulla irunda, onakulla asiravada vanditairu.
If this is in you, you'll be going on getting the blessing.
Udonbadikke, adala nee unmai, irukavandide avasi.
It is necessary, you should be very faithful in the covenant.
Poruthana pannada.
You don't make any.
Poruthana pannitena, adu neravati paru, asiravada vanditairukku.
If you go and make the promise, go and perform it, you'll go on get the blessing.
Tamilla choluvaa, erakkarakanna, rennisiyo, uru.
In Tamil, there is a saying, well, well.
Yes, chonna, yes, adu vera mari chunnara.
Jesus said in another way.
Kodunga, appalu, dungalke, koduka.
It shall be given unto you.
Adukpeyere, udonbadikke petti.
The name of the ark is Ark of Covenant.
Udonbadikke petti, nee udonbadikkeela unmai irundu, andha petti pola valamia irundina, onakka asiravada, o viidla vanditairukku.
If you are so faithful in the covenant and you are having that box in your house.
Irannadu, arukpeyere, saachi petti.
Secondly, it is the Ark of Testimony.
Nee poruthneyamottu neravatna podaade, nee saachiul oru valkene vaalam.
Not only you have to fulfill all your work, you have to live a life of testimony.
Devanukkum, manushanukum, unba, ha, nee oru saachiul oru valkavaalam.
In front of God and man, you have to live a life of witness.
Chuma asiravada vandiray.
Easily you will not get any blessing.
Devan onakka asiravada thukutkununchunna, nee udonbadikkeela unmai arukana, saachiai vaalam.
If God was to bless you, you should be very faithful in your covenant, as well as live as a testimony.
Anga vedham alakamacholukradu, andha petti irundan naatkali la, othe, obethi edam viittai devan asiruditha.
The scripture says beautifully, because the box was in the Obeth Adam's house, it was blessed much.
Enneke, katthar, etthana vera asirudikavurubugiri.
Today, how many of you want God to bless you?
Udonbadikke petti, o viidla vandrichinna, katthar asiruvichu, de, airpar.
If the Ark of Covenant comes to your house, God will be going on blessing you.
Irannadu.
Secondly.
O viidu, onudiyapullayalu, onakundana ellan, kattharala, veeli erakeappatturukku.
You, your house and all your children, all things belong to your house should be first.
Veeli fencing eppon poirichu, adavada onnumai kareyadu.
If you don't have any fencing, nothing will be there.
Adukne, daily jibchittairukku.
Every day, you have to pray for that.
Analathasatana choltra, nee, avanayum, avanukkundana, ellavachim, rennisiir, veeli adaitir, avan asirudikipattan, sambathupari, de, poor.
Even Satan say, he got, he got weapons around him and all belongs to him, so he was blessed.
Daily, or akkuni madil, o viidla irunditairukku.
Every day, there should be a fear evolve around your house.
Namakallarukkun terime.
We all know that.
Indra Gandhiya sutukundutanga.
Mr. Sindra Gandhi was assassinated.
Eppri?
How did she was assassinated?
Daily, avan vandu bulletproof potutha arundanga.
Every day, she was wearing a bullet.
Oray oranalanisila?
One day.
Nammy area kula dana irukro, koodarukrala yare, make up allaragal, nammy make up allaragal, nammy arathle, viidukulayanisira. Innaradukku porongkurala, rembu assaultarana.
She was very assault without wearing that bulletproof and.
Avanla nisitanga, avan, avadu sutukundta.
They were assassinated.
Ah, idu eda kanbikidu?
What does this show?
Nee konjunguda assaultarana, o veeli poirichina, ellan, nisinchiru, poidu.
If you are very little assault, all the fence goes.
Daily, katthaave, ya manukke veeli adengaa, andavare.
Lord, every day, put a fence.
Ya viidukke veeli adengaa.
Lord, put a fence around my house.
Adu veelya thiriyadu.
It will not go out.
Oru ragasya chyal.
It's a secret action.
Job twenty nine three. Idhu devan de ragasya chyal, en, koodarathin mail irundadu.
The secret thing of God was upon my tent.
Adu yarkame thiriyadu.
Nobody knows that.
Oru secretana, oru pathu appo, o melai irunditairukku.
You'll be having the perseverance, the secret upon you.
Unru, udonbadikke petti, o viidla irupadu.
One thing, the covenant of God should be in your house.
Onudiyavalvi, oru deviigamana, produsthi ullo oru vallvi.
Your life is a divine consecrated life.
Irannadu, kattharala, nee veeli adakeappattu oru manushana irukku.
Secondly, you are a man fenced by the Lord.
Unru.
Thirdly.
Kattharuku bayandini naddakku.
You have to walk by fear of God.
Kattharuku bayandini naddakramanushana, nee vidamai asirudikipaduvaan, un kaiyalin prayasatte, nee nisivai, jaapaduvaai, baakiyamun, nanmai onakke, undai irukku, o manavi ipputtu irupa, karparpa, shoparpanlan cholala, ebidchuliruke? Ennechuliruke, o manavi, o viittorangalil, kani derum, torture, torture la, kani derum, chedi.
The wife shall be a fruitful wife by the size of the in-house.
Netna, ane, orarathla karla, kalambi, veliyur, ngen, nee bayandhrayaa, kalamra.
Yesterday, I saw a reporter in her own place.
Ah, andha sagaran karukattavandusolra.
That brother came to the car and said.
Ya wifea pathingla, edhav choniila?
You have seen my wife, have you said anything?
Naambo irukkade veliyur.
I went to that.
Ah, vandusolra, ya wifea konjam, ya paatingla, pesningla.
Have you seen my wife and talked?
Kuddu pochunna varavelliyava?
I asked to go to the meeting, she did not come. Please tell.
Ella smooththar ki, ivu oruthi thana kenadu, priyata.
Everything is very smooth, only she is very dashing.
Naan, biblethukunna progi, avlo om maati then, enni, marvuti, mirugama maatirova boloth thiridu gura.
After carrying the bible, I become very soft, she will change me as a beast, I think.
Rembu kavanama arukku.
You should be very careful.
Onudiy viittle, andha veeli poirichu, avada.
If in your house, the fence goes me this song.
Nee kattharuku bayandini nandanda, kattharunna asiruvichitairupad.
If you fear the Lord and walk, what will go and bless you?
Ah, adutthada gaya.
Next.
Nee, kodunga, asiravada vanditairu.
You give, you will get the blessing.
Ibrin, ubaamathalna parkumbaladu.
We can see in Deuteronomy.
Padinindhamadi hara.
Fifteen chapter.
Patthu, padinette, ibri vasanangal, alla, nee paathitairu.
Eight, ten and eighteenth verses.
Ah, idulala, nee paathikantsonna, kudu.
You give.
Yarukudu?
To whom you have to give.
Yelegalukku kudu.
You give to the poor.
Thaaralamakudu.
You give generously.
Andha yelegalukkun, nee kuduukku, kuduukku, katthar onakku kudutkite airupad.
Go on, give to the poor, God will also go and give to you.
Abram oray oralidanga, ana, avan asiruvichar parunga, avan de aadum maadugala, buumi nisila, thangamudile.
Abraham was only one man, but God was blessing him because his lips, the earth couldn't bar all the lips of.
Avan, avlo asiruvichar.
That much level, God blessed everyone.
Isaac asiruvichare.
Isaac was blessed by the Lord.
Iduvarikim biblelabdi, yara asiruvikipadu, rennechira.
I think nobody was blessed in the Bible so far.
Ebidha asiruvikipada?
How did they were blessed?
Noor madang.
Hundred times.
Avan vedacha, adu noor madang balan kadichu.
He sold, he got the reward hundred times.
Eliassar, abram, poticholumbaladu, ende, ejamane, epidirukkara.
When Elisa says about Abraham, that was my master.
Moonu bedroomulla, oru viidu ochirukkara.
He's having three.
Munala konjam, edang kadakke, ibri achona?
Did he say so?
Ende ejamann, siemana irukkaraana.
My master is a very rich man.
Katthar nambu, oru bodenisivadu la, avan korayavadavadu.
If any man believes the Lord, he will not lack in anything.
Kattharinambu, raavuno, selipan.
A man believes the Lord will flourish.
Oru manushan choltra, andavare, Ramuludum prayasapattu, onnumai nisila, look, Anji, Anjilisolra, engalukkun onnumai karekela, aanal, ummudiya vaartainbadi, rennisiira. Iba portran chon.
A man said, Lord, the whole life we have tried, but we didn't receive anything, but according to your word, we put.
Enneke, katthudiya vaartainbadi poittupadu, o valkamariyadu.
According to the word of God, you put today, your life will change.
Katthar onudiyakaringal, all asirudikipadu.
God is going to bless all your matters.
Adinala, nee, isharia purinchukonga, asiravada than thanaa varu.
So in a right manner, you have to understand the blessing will automatically come to you.
Naanu rembu yalmiana kodumbathal, allarunirukka.
I was also belong to a very poor family.
Naambo, vice therinji, rembu kattanla, enga family per.
Our family has gone in very great loan when I knew.
Yaamma, velabakros, schoolkethakal, ulakadila, akount vanguvav.
We will get the account in the shop, which is nearby the.
Abri, abri vangya, akount kuduthodu, kadan, muri, adu, andha masu fulla, salavukka irukka.
That whole month, we won't have any money to spend.
Yaappa, vandu, oru deviigamallada, oru alankarana, adu ellame alinjuvichu.
My father was not a divine man, everything was destroyed.
Onnumai kareyadu.
We don't have anything.
Adutthi, saharayatla, sambathichu, rembu irundu che, patto, onnumai nisila, evlo fasta, anichu, avloum poichu.
We earned the money by selling the arag, as much as we earned, everything gone out.
Ah, evlo orumaila poirukku.
We went for so much poverty.
Sondakaran, viidukku pona, avangal, all chopduvavga, nagala veelya ukandurukku.
If you go to the relatives, they will be eating, we will be seated out.
Adu oru kaalav.
It was a time.
Ipana, amrapatha, raja mariyada, kodukkara, oru kaalairukku.
If, if, nowadays, if they say they are garnering me royally.
Ah, rembu, nirukappu, adu oru pathai.
It was a path.
Ana, adukpeyaga, indha markatla kaaluvachu, peyaga.
After we step on this religion.
Ellan, andavara, piddichu, peyaga, ippo, engiyo vanditanga.
And now, after we got the Lord, we are in summer.
Edukcholtra na.
Why you say so?
Devan de pillena, kattharunna asiruvichu.
If you are a child of God, God will bless you.
Sornu berada.
It don't be find.
Oruvele, oni, indha pathili, koduvi, magimila, oru menmian, naddukku, kodubogun, deva sitthama arukala.
It may be the will of God, God will take you the same path and bring you to the glory.
Ana, Isaac asirudikipattan.
But Isaac was blessed.
Avan asirudichar, parunga, avan vara vara vara, virithi, adandu, undairunda.
He was going on increasing, going on coming and increasing.
Ana, ebidinala, mingal, indha karitha, rembu kavanama irukku.
So you should be very careful in this matter.
Unru, katthudiya petti.
One is the Ark of God.
Irannadu, veeli.
Second, the fence.
Unru, kattharuku bayandini naddakku.
Thirdly, you have to fear the Lord and walk.
Chuma kasavandu, avan, abdi, drimmman, nandit, abdi, yarayam, marikiam, abdi, all palagirariya.
After getting the money, it should be, it should not be trim and don't respect anybody and don't walk like that.
Viidukatna, avan, ellari, odhirirukkada.
When you build a house, don't shake everybody.
Na, ibri, patthala, rembu vera paathit.
I have seen so many people like.
Na, yarkanay, omulcholirukka, rennechira.
Already I have told you, I think.
Faith home la, electrical valve, pathukutrunna, onukke, katthar farinla, vaipukuduthavane, adhe, faith homekku, pattu vesti, pattu shattu, chainum, pottu, vandhinna, nee yare?
A believer who was working in the faith home and got a job in abroad, he went abroad and came back.
Na, ya kanala, avan paathan.
I have seen him with my own eyes.
Andha vesti, abdi, taraila, iluthitu, varudhu, avan, avadi, churchla, abdi, ulavara.
That silk tote was also crawling on the ground, he was also coming.
Adhe, therukka, adutthathiru, na, imviidu, chapadai, kareyadu, patavaram, faith homele, kandu, pora, rayerpal, nor tharundharu, avarukudai, ukandutti, kaiyakala, piddichu, vichit, avarukudukkara, chapadai, kareyadu, kanchi, kuduchu, ukandurupad.
I have passed with him, he was, his house was the next street, he did not have any, anything to eat.
Oru chance kadichu, poiitda, avan, thirimbivandha, na, irukkunna, na, apchinnabradharu, anga churcha, attamadra, ya napav, oru, vishwasha, chunduka, na, ayam, faith homele, arunala, paya, andha payan thangra.
After he got a chance even there and came back, I was a small brother, I thought he knew believer, he was new soul, but they.
Andha vesti, abdi, taray nisidu, indha peri, MP, ML, isla, iluthitai, varramari, indha, pengal, reethu, pinnaala, tongu, toru, valangala, adhe, merivanna.
As if the veil, they will be carrying that like, it was, it was coming with the door.
Ah, artharathil, nee nisira, kodai budikira.
The meat night.
Malapayala, pati, pani, kodabudikira.
There is no rain, but you are catching the umbrella.
Naanay, adhe, chinnabradharu, adhe, urulirukkum, boj.
When I was a small brother in the same city.
Na, irukkum, boj, avan, avadu, leave, kodundu, oru porara.
After he came for the holidays and went back.
Oray masam.
Within a month.
Body, aluminium coffin la, karingichu.
The dead body came in an aluminium coffin. He died.
Idukmeela, andavara, nisimataru, idukmeela, avan, andha kodumi, nisimdayadu, yen, sanidikken, nee ipputtu, vandit, peyaga, onakke, indha buumi, nisayadadu, edangkara.
After you come to my presence in this manner, you don't have any place on earth.
Idu vandu, dressa, poittu, colorful, avaradu, kula, edang kareyadu, idu, bayathodu, nadukathodu, kaliguru, vendi, oru edan, sevikivandhi, oru edan, idul, nee, evlo, paparath, thaalmay, varayu, avlo, onakku, naladu.
This is a place we have to worship the Lord with reverence and fear as much as humble, if you come here, that is good for you.
Nee, adhe, churchilla, kanchi, kuduchitu, ukandutti, andha churchilla, nee, vandu, chain, pottu, thani, ulavaruva, abdingala, level, nee, vandit, peyaga, adutthan, churchilla, onakka, anumidi, illa.
In the same church.
Onakku, vaaladu, kanaumidi, illa.
The same church, we are eating the gruel, but after coming here with the chain and silk doy, and come here, there is no place to live on.
Kattharuku bayandini naddakramanushan, asirudikipadu.
The man who fear the Lord, he will be blessed by the Lord.
Naalavu.
Bothly.
Nee, kuduukku, koduthittairupad.
You have to go and give it.
Yaanta kodundu, la, yelegalukku kodunna.
No, I am not asking you to give to me, give to the poor.
Idu asirudikavu, kudiyavalika.
These are the ways to.
Ana, ellam, poirichu, abdingriya, adi, epidipoichu.
Why all, all things gone, you are saying, why, how it has gone?
Adi, epidipoirukku.
How, how did it has gone?
Epidha, adu, onavutu, pohala.
How it may go out of you?
Adukne, na, oru, rendu, moonu, reason cholra.
I'll give you three or four ways.
Adukne, epid, naal, root, chunna, adhe, meri, naal, root, cholra.
I'll give two or four roots for that.
Ubhaavam, eight, padinella, sambathiyata, yen, samarthitala, sambathichithan, chunni, na, adu, poidu.
Deuteronomy eight seven, in my wealth.
Eight seventeen, lirundha, abdi, vasichu, pathingana.
Eight seven, and if you go and read it.
Ennechuliruke?
What is said there?
Yen samarthiyam.
With my power and might.
Naantha, sambathichan.
I have only earned everything.
Kattharunkara, vaatayata, nee, ninditairukku, ah, oni, choltrukku, moonu, tripukku, munali, yar, vanditairukku, katthar, 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 nee, solitairukku.
You have to go on say the Lord, the Lord, the Lord.
Yen samarthiyamum, yen, belanum, idu, sambathithadu.
My power and my might have earned this.
Apidin, nee, solirada.
Don't say so.
Ayisuvitha, sambathikka, takadana, belanai, katthar, yena, kenanisidar, tandar, nee, sol.
If God has given me the sin to end the riches, he have to say.
Ah, first point.
The first point.
Yen samarthiyam, nee, solit, avada.
If you say it is my power.
Naan kettina, mahababilon, oru raja chunnara.
Your king said, this is the Babylon, which I have built.
Katthan, yarada?
Who has built it?
Avan than, kettna?
He only built it.
Naan kettina, mahababilon.
This is the Babylon, which I have built.
Andha uppari, lenne, abdi, raja vasratla, lenne, ellam, mandri, pradanikal, all paduttrukku, mochana, ido, naan kettina, mahababilon.
He was standing on the pinnacle and when all the ministers were looking, he said, this is the Babylon, which I have built.
Cholli, mudichu, vaay, moona, avan.
Soon after, he has finished that.
Rendu kaal, lenne, man, takkun, epid marida, naal kaal, vandita.
He came to the four legs, he was standing before two legs.
Mudiala, vegama, vigarama, vandrichu.
All the hairs grow fast.
Nahamala, ottenai, vandrichu.
The nails grew fast.
Meela, mudiala, mirugathol, mari, aidichu.
All the skins became the skin of animal.
Ellam, mandri, kukonnumila, raja, rajan, koopra, avan, keng, puthiya, poirichu.
All the kings were calling king, king, but he was lost, all his.
Ellarun, pakka, avan, epid, aranmana, viittu, veelya, vandita.
When all were looking, he came out of the palace.
Oru, pattnu, misutthukul, avan, yara, marida, oru, priyam, mirugama, marida.
Within ten minutes, he became a great beast.
Ellarun, pinnaala, maan, avan, rani, eeni, ellam, pinnaala, odi, vandanga, avan, roadla, vandu, avan, vikul, eduthu, sabadaramsta.
Where all the queen and everybody came back, back of him, when he came to the road, he started eating grass.
Kettina, babylon, oru vaathachunna, parunga, adunde, result.
Only this is the result, because he said, I have built the babylon.
Kuduthar, nee, solit, na, saagar, varikadu, onakke, epid, adu, karachiru.
If you say, God has given me till your death, you will be going on getting.
Naan, kastappattan, naan, 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 chambathichan, nee, epid, kakaala, abdino, wife, cholriya, nee, ke, onakka, addi, ulapodu, nartho.
If you say to the wife, I have built it, I have earned everything, that you are going to get the.
யார்த்துச் சொன்னு சொல்லி, ரோட்ல சொன்னாலும் சொல்லி. யார்த்துச் சொன்னாலும் என்ன சொல்லணும் நீ? என்ன சொல்லணும்? யார்த்தன் சொல்லணும்? என்ன சத்தம் சொல்லுங்கள் பயந்துடிங்க? கத்தருக்குடுத்தா.
Whomever you say, even to the pastor, but you ought to say, God has given me.
நாளைக்கு நீ ஒரு எடத்துக்கு போருங்கிட்டு சொன்னான் கூட நீ எப்படி சொல்லணுமா? எக்கவுல என்ன சொல்லிருக்கே? கத்தருக்கு சித்தமானால் நாலை நானிதைச் செய்வேன்.
If you want to go to tomorrow or any place, if it is a will of God, I will do.
ஒரு எடத்துக்கு நீ போருவா இருந்தா கூட எப்பட்டான் சொல்லணும்? கத்தருக்கு சித்தமானால்.
If it is a will of God, if you want to go to a place.
சில கல்யாண பத்திக்குல நான் பாத்துருக்கேன்.
I have seen some.
கத்தருக்கு சித்தமானால் வருகிற பதினாலாம் தேடி இந்த விவாகம் நடைபெறும்போ.
If it is a will of God, the marriage will be on fourteen.
எவ்வொ சித்தலேனா?
If it is not the will of God.
அது நடக்காதுன்னு சொல்லுறான்.
It will not even happen.
எல்லாமே அவருடையு சித்தா?
All things under his will.
அதானா தைவிசெதி எப்பவாவது என் சாமர்த்தியம் சொல்லிராரீங்க விட்டுருவீங்க எல்லாதியும்.
So please don't say it is my power and might.
இரண்டாவது.
Secondly.
பிரசங்கி ஐந்து ஆர்.
Excelsis five six.
ரூட் சொல்லித் தெரியாம நீங்க போய் எங்க அது முடியுற கூடாது.
You should not dash without doing the root somewhere.
உன் மாம்சத்தை பாவத்துக்கு உள்ளாக்க வாய்க்கு எடங்குடாது கவனிங்க.
Suffer nor they mouth to cast their flesh to sin.
நான் வீட்ல இல்லைனா ஆவுசைவத்தான் இது பிறகு எங்க பிரதருக்குதான் சொல்றாரு. நல்ல சொல்லட்டும் பாஸ்டர் அப்படின்னு நீ உகாந்துராத.
He don't be seated quietly because the pastor is saying to the brother, I am an outsider.
உன் மாம்சத்தை பாவத்துக்குள்ளாக்க உன் வாய்க்கு எடங்குடாது.
Suffer nor they mouth to cast their flesh to sin.
எல்லாம் பேசிட்டு தெரியாம பேசிட்டன் புத்தி பேசினால் சொல்டேன்னு சொல்லாத.
After talking everything with foolishness, I have told.
தேவன் உண்மையில் கோவுங்கொண்டு உன் கைகளின் கிரியைகளை அலிப்பான்.
Why God does get angry and destroy all the work of the.
உன் வார்த்தைல தான் உன் ஆசிரவாதம் நிக்கிதே.
Only your blessing is turned on your voice.
அல்லது நீதி மிள்ளோரு வாசனை உண்டு. ஆசிரவாதம் எதுல இருக்கே? உன் நாவின் கிளத்தான் என்ன இருக்கே? ஆசிரவாதம்.
Your blessing is under your tongue, there is a.
உன் வார்த்த தடுமாறிச்சினா உன் பிஸ்னஸ் முடிஞ்சிச்சினா நர்த்தோ.
If your word slipped, your business also stopped.
ஒரு அம்மா.
One mother.
நீ பேப்பர்ல உட்டபட்சிருப்பீங்க.
You might write in the paper.
ஒரு எடத்துல டெண்டர் உட்டாங்க.
There was a tender in a place.
அந்த டெண்டர்ல அந்த பொருளை எடுக்கணும்னு ஆசப்பட்டுச்சே.
She wanted to take the thing from the tender.
அதுக்கு எத்தனையும் லெச்சத்துக்கு அது என்ன செஞ்சிருச்சே? அது கேட்டிருச்சு.
It was announced first, so many lakhs of that.
எழுதும்போது கூட ஒரு சிரவ போட்டுச்சே.
She was writing, she put another.
ஒரே ஒரு சிரவ எஸ்ட்ரா வென்னிச்சிருச்சே. நீ சமீதத்தில பேப்பர் பிட்டே என்ன கிடகாக.
She added one more zero with the.
எஸ்ட்ரா ஒரு சிரவ போயச்சு.
Extra one zero is zero.
அந்த நிருவாகம் படிச்சவன் நீ போர்ட்டிட்ட எருக்குட்டுதா? இப்படி ஒரு சான்ஸ் கிடச்சிருக்கு நம்ம எதிர்பார்த்ததுவிட கோடி கணக்கல ஜாசியாவருன் மத்தம் கூடுதா?
That company also gave the tender what we expect, no, that she gave.
உங்களுக்கு இந்த இது குடுக்கப்படுகிறது எங்க நிருவாகம் உங்கள் டெண்டரை ஏற்றுக்கொண்டது. நீங்க அவங்க அதுக்கு முன்னாலே ஏற்கனவே ஒரு அமௌண்ட் கிட்டிருந்துச்சே. அந்த டெண்டர்ல போட்டுருக்காக. அதுவே நாங்கள் ஏற்றுக்கொண்டா? நீங்க இத்தனா நிறிகுல மீதி உள்ள இந்த பணத்தைச் செலுத்துங்களா?
She has deposited some amount in the company, the company wrote to her, come and get the tender because she has returned that.
இது போய் பாத்துச்சே.
Even there.
மத்த இதுக்கு பயந்துச்சே என்ன தான் எழுந்து தெரியுது. தப்பாள் விட்டோ.
She has written only because.
என்னலாம் போய் சொல்லி பாத்துச்சே அவன் ஒத்துக்கவே இல்ல.
What she told so many matters, but she didn't.
அது சொல்லிச்சான். என் வீடு சொத்தலா இத்தாக்குடா நிசிம்பிடயாது என்னலே? கட்டம் மிடயாது நீ கோட்டுல போய்க்காந்து.
If I sell all the houses and all the land, everything, I cannot even get it.
ஒரே ஒரு சிரவ.
Only one zero.
ஒரு வார்த்த உங்க வாய்ல இருந்து சிரவ போயிருச்சே எல்லாமே அளிஞ்சுபிடு.
If one word comes from your mouth, everything will be destroyed.
ஆகாய் முதலாம் அதியாராயில்டா இரண்டாம் அதியாரத்துல பார்க்கும்போது கத்தர் செலருடைய கையின் பிரயாசத்தை அடிச்சிரா.
Oh, I first chapter, I second chapter, God is destroying the labor of the in hand somebody.
அது அடிச்சது நாலா அவங்களால் ஒன்னே பண்ணும்படியா.
Because God was beaten that, no, they can't do anything.
கத்தரத்தை அடிச்சது நாலா அவங்களுக்கு முன்னெற்றுமே இல்ல.
There is no progress in their life because God was beaten or taken.
அவருக்கு வாழ்க்கையில ஆசிரவாதமே இல்ல.
There is no blessing in their life.
ஆகாய் இரண்டு பதினேளே.
Oh, I two seventeen.
உன் கைகளின் வேலையில எல்லாம் நிசாச்சே. அடிச்சண்ட.
I smote you with all the labor of the hands.
எவ்வளவு கச்சமான ஒரு காரியம்.
What a difficult word.
முதலாம் அதியாராயில்டா ஆராவசனத்துல பாத்தீங்கன்னா திரலாய் வெதைத்தான் கொஞ்சமாயாறுத்தான்.
How many of you are going such kind of life?
நீதி முள்ளிகள் அஞ்சுபத்தில வாழ்க்கையிலே தவறான தொடர்புகளுருந்தால் ஆசிரவாதம் ஓண்ட வராது. நீ சம்பாதிப்பே வேறு ஒரு ரூட்ல போய்க்கொண்டே.
In Proverbs 5:10, if you are having wrong life or wrong relationship in your life, whatever you may, and it will go.
ஆசிரவாதம் வர்றதுக்கு நாலு வலியிருக்கு. ஆசிரவாதம் போறதுக்கு ஒரு நாலு வலியிருக்கு.
There are four rules, the blessing has to come and the blessing has to go.
ஆசிரவாதம் வரணும்னா நீ உடன்படிக்கப்பட்டியா மாறணோ?
If you want to get the blessing, you should become the.
கத்தடிய வேலி உனக்கு இருக்கணும்.
The fence of God should be for you.
அடித்ததாக கத்தடிய பிரியம் உண்மையில இருக்கணும்.
The delight or the beauty of the Lord should be upon you.
நீ கத்தருக்கு பயந்து நடக்கணும்.
You have to walk, fear the Lord.
நீ ஏழைகளுக்கு குடுக்கணும்.
You have to give to the poor.
இந்த நாலு இருந்தா கத்தர் உங்க கையின் கிரியாசத்தை ஆசிச்சிச்சித்தே.
If you are having this for God, we are blessing all the labor of the in hand.
உன் வாய் வார்த்த சரிலேனா ஆசிரவாதம் போய்டு.
If the word of your mouth is not right, all your blessings will go out.
கத்தர் உங்க கையின் கிரியாசத்தை அடிச்சிட்டான் ஒன்னே இல்லாவு.
If God has smote all the labor of the in hand, he will not have anything.
நான்தான் சம்பாதிச்சேன். நான் என் சாமர்த்தியம் சொன்னீனா போய்டு.
If you say with my power and might, I have and everything will go.
மாநுசியத்தில தவறான தொடர்பு இருந்து சம்பாதிக்கிறது எல்லாம் அங்க போய்க்குடுத்தேன் எல்லாம் போய்டு.
If you have the wrong relationship, if you have and everything will go there.
ஆனா பைபில் சொல்லுது உன் கைகளின் பிரயாசத்தை நீ சாப்புடுவாய்.
But the Bible says that you will eat the labor of the in hand.
எல்லாரும் கண்களை மொடுலாமா?
Shall we all close our eyes?
ஆண்டவர் சொன்ன வாத்தியை நான் உங்களுக்கு சொல்லிருக்கற.
What the Lord has told me, I have told you.
வர்ற செனலையும் சொல்லிட்டேன், போற செனலையும் சொல்லிட்டேன்.
What are the channel, the blessing come and what are the channel, it will go, I have told you.
இனிமேல் உனக்கு ஆசிரவாதம் வருன்னா இந்த ரூட்டு நீ கடப்படி வந்து குண்டே இருக்கும்.
If you want to get the blessing, go on, follow this channel, you will get the blessing.
இதுவரைக்கும் உன்னுடைய ஆசிரவாதம் குறஞ்சதுக்கு காரணமும் தெரிஞ்சிருச்சு. என்ன அது சரிப்படுத்து.
You also know what are the reasons, all the blessing has gone out, you have to make it right.
ஆண்டவரேன் எவ்வளவோ சம்பாதிக்கறேன் ஆனாலே உன்னே வீடு வந்து செர்லே என்னுதுக்குப் படுறேயா கத்தர் நீக்குன்னு ஆசிரிதிக்கப்போறார்.
Are you going to worry? I have earned much, Lord, but nothing is coming to my house, God is going to bless you today.
உன்னை வேதனையை கத்தர் பாத்துருக்கற.
God is seeing all your agonies.
உன்னை கையின் பிரயாசத்துல தடைய கத்தர் அகச்சபோகுற.
God is going to remove the hindrance of the labor of the in hand.
இனிமேல் நீ கடன் கொடுக்குப்பாய், கடன் வாங்காதுருப்பாய்.
Hereafter you will lend and mainly you will not borrow.
எல்லாரும் ஒரு நிமிஷங்கண்களை மொடு.
Let us all close our eyes for two minutes.
நான் ஒரு வீடுக்கு போயிருந்தேன்.
I got into your house.
அந்த பெண்ணிட்ட கேட்டேன்.
I asked that woman.
அந்த வீட்ல விவாகமான அந்த பெண்.
And that sister asked the married one.